You're on record.
I am on record. All right, then. All right, the meeting of the Township of Precipiny Troy Hills Planning Board for Monday, April 17, 2023, at 7:30 PM. Announcement is made that adequate notice of this meeting has been given and that it's being conducted in accordance with NJ SAG 10:4-6 at SEC of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Barberio.
Here.
Mr. Dadee.
Here.
Councilman DePiero.
Here.
Mr. Mealy.
Present.
Mr. Napolitano.
Here.
Mr. Shaw.
Here.
Mr. Stansiel.
Here.
Ms. Beely.
Here.
Mr. Vaughn Aiken.
Here.
Chairman Dinsmore.
I am here.
We also have our board planner, Ms. Winter, our board engineer, Mr. Holloway, and our board attorney. Ah, Ms. Stein.
All right. All right, if we have the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ah, is there anybody here that has something that they'd like to bring to this board that is not on our agenda tonight because this meeting is open to the general public? Hearing and seeing none, we move on. We have a whole bunch of resolutions here, and Nora has very carefully and helpfully color-coded them for me. We've got a couple that are light blue, I guess, that have all the same people who can second it, so we have Application 20:524, Lidl U.S. Operations, 435 North Beverick, and we have Application 20:508, LRF Holsey Logistics, that are both voted on by the same individuals. Somebody would like to make either a joint resolution or decide to do them separately?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I'll start it off separately, if you don't mind.
As, as you wish.
A motion to approve resolution for Application number 20:524, Little U.S. Operations, 435 North Beverick Road, block 483, lot 1, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance and major soil reglaming permit.
Second adage.
This is, this is the, an extension, actually, right?
All of these?
Yes.
All of these are extensions?
Except for the last two.
All right, so all of these are extensions that we're approving? That's what you, you moved, right, Mr. Mealy?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
Second adage.
If you could call the roll, please, Nora?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stansiel?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes. All right, Mr. Mealy, if you want to be our official resolution person tonight?
Well, Mr. Dadee would like to do the next one.
Well, then, the two of you could do that. All right.
A motion to approve resolution for Application number 20:520, One Campus Associates, Three Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.12. One Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.7. Seven Campus Drive, Block 202, Lot 3.8. Preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
These are also, this is also an extension?
Extension.
Yes. Do I have a second?
Second, Matt.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Um, Beely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
No?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I meant Dinsmore.
Yes. All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to approve the resolution for Application 20:516, RRT Two Campus LLC, Two Campus Drive, Lot 202, Lot 3.2, and Campus Drive, Lot 202, Lot 3.2, 1633 Littleton Drive, Lot 202, Lot 3.1, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
This is also an extension? Uh, do I have a second?
Second, Napolitano.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve resolution for Application 20:508, LRF One, LC Logistics LLC, 60 East Hellsy Road, Block 737, Lot 10, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Do I have a second?
Second, Beely.
All right. Also an extension?
Yes.
Um, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stansiel?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our motion to approve the resolution for Application number 21:526, Jasmine Polanco, Four Mohawk Ave., Block 548, Lot 6, minor site plan with C variance.
Okay, this is also an extension? Do I have a second?
Second adage.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to approve resolution for Application number 22.521, William Hartsman, 89 Lake Shore Drive, Lot 371, Lot 6, minor subdivision with C variance for the two-lot subdivision.
This is actually not an extension?
No.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second, Mealy.
Uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our motion to approve the resolution for Application number 22.502, Paul Miller, 189 Route 46, Block 767, Lot 4.01, preliminary and final major site plan to construct an addition for service, service base, waiting area, offices. Second, I'm sorry, second.
This is also not an extension? This is the actual application? Uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barberio?
Yes.
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve resolution for Application 20:508, LRF One, LC Logistics LLC, 60 East Hellsy Road, Block 737, Lot 10, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Do I have a second?
Second, Beely.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Our motion to approve the resolution for Application number 21:526, Jasmine Polanco, Four Mohawk Ave., Block 548, Lot 6, minor site plan with C variance.
Okay, this is also an extension? Do I have a second?
Second adage.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to approve resolution for Application number 22.521, William Hartsman, 89 Lake Shore Drive, Lot 371, Lot 6, minor subdivision with C variance for the two-lot subdivision.
This is actually not an extension?
No.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second, Mealy.
Uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve resolution for Application 20:508, LRF One, LC Logistics LLC, 60 East Hellsy Road, Block 737, Lot 10, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Do I have a second?
Second, Beely.
All right. Also an extension?
Yes.
Um, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stansiel?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, another question?
Yes.
Our motion to approve the resolution for Application number 21:526, Jasmine Polanco, Four Mohawk Ave., Block 548, Lot 6, minor site plan with C variance.
Okay, this is also an extension? Do I have a second?
Second adage.
Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to approve resolution for Application 20:508, LRF One, LC Logistics LLC, 60 East Hellsy Road, Block 737, Lot 10, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Do I have a second?
Second, Beely.
All right. Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve resolution for Application 20:508, LRF One, LC Logistics LLC, 60 East Hellsy Road, Block 737, Lot 10, preliminary and final major site plan with C variance.
Do I have a second?
Second, Beely.
All right. Also an extension?
Yes.
Um, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Stansiel?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A motion to approve resolution for Application number 22.521, William Hartsman, 89 Lake
Shore Drive, Lot 371, Lot 6, minor subdivision with C variance for the two-lot subdivision.
This is actually not an extension?
No.
Yep. Do I have a second?
Second, Mealy.
Uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, a motion to approve resolution for Application number 22.502, Paul Miller, 189 Route 46, Block 767, Lot 4.01, preliminary and final major site plan to construct an addition for service, service base, waiting area, offices.
Second, I'm sorry, second.
This is also not an extension? This is the actual application? Uh, Nora, would you call the roll, please?
Barberio?
Yes.
Dadee?
Yes.
DePiero?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Matt?
Yes.
Napolitano?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Beely?
Yes.
Vaughn Aiken?
Yes.
Dinsmore?
Yes.
All right, we've gotten through the major work here of the resolutions.
We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that is Application number 23:505, Littleton Elementary School, Brook Lawn, 250 Brook Lawn, Block 168, Lot 34. This is a courtesy review to construct an addition, construct an addition playground and retaining walls. I'm assuming the applicant is here.
Good evening. My name is Carly Clinton, and I also have with me Dawn Arson, and we are from the law firm of Skank Price Smith &amp; King LLC. We represent the applicant, Littleton Elementary School. The subject of property for tonight's courtesy review hearing is located at 51 Brook Lawn Drive, which property is designated as Block 168, Lot 34. The property is located within the R1 zone. The applicant is presenting a courtesy review for the proposed expansion of the Littleton Elementary School, relocation of one of the playgrounds, new sidewalks, and a four-foot-high retaining wall. The project is also being presented for a capital project review. A brief history of the property. The Littleton Elementary School is a local public school for grades kindergarten through grade five. The proposed addition is approximately 7,000 square feet and will allow the school to expand grades for pre-kindergarten students. The property includes 16.857 acres and was constructed between 1957 and 1963. The Precipiny Township Planning Board previously reviewed and approved Application number 99: 500 in 1999, approving a 5,662 square foot addition to Littleton Elementary School. Applicant's engineer, Beth E. Kenderdine, from Edwards Engineering Group, is present this evening and can provide testimony regarding the proposed development. Applicant's planner, Stephen Colella, from Perret-Somgen Architects LLC, is present this evening as well. Finally, Superintendent Dr. Barbara Sargent is present to testify as needed. With that being said, tonight, I will offer testimony of the following experts. I'm going to call Beth E. Kenderdine, our engineer, present.
Thanks. Oh, that one, there's one that's already on it. I'm sorry, did you spell your last name for me?
Uh, K-E-N.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. B-E-R.
Mm-hmm.
D-I-N-E.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Hello, I'm Beth Kenderdine from Edwards Engineering Group. If you could please raise your right hand.
Certainly.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? I do. And you state your name for the record? Could you provide your business address and some background on your experience? Uh, yes, I work for Edwards Engineering Group. We're located at 69 West End Avenue in Somerville, New Jersey. Um, I received my Bachelor of Science in Civil Engineering in 1998 from the University of Delaware, um, my professional engineering license in 2005, um, from the state of New Jersey. And is that license still current? It is. All right.
Any questions about this witness on this testimony? Hearing and seeing none? Please.
Thank you very much. Uh, well, Carly succinctly, um, sort of defined the site that we're working with. I'm assuming that you all are familiar with Littleton Elementary School. Um, this is, uh, what I'm looking at.
I didn't think so.
No, it's a courtesy review.
Sorry about that.
There's no way, I'm sorry. No, that's okay.
Discussing a technicality that doesn't, isn't affected by doing a courtesy review.
Um, this is the existing Littleton Elementary School. It is number 51 Brook Lawn Drive. There was a little bit of a mix-up about the address. Um, and this is Brook Lawn Drive here. This is the school building. This is the front parking area. Um, this is an existing conditions plan, so you can see kind of where the property line is, um, to the south, and then the existing playgrounds and walkway, uh, and paved, uh, play area that's behind the existing building. So I'm going to just switch the, the sheet to Sheet C 0.2, and you'll see what we are proposing. So it's, uh, an end cap building addition over what is now a paved playground, um, and then a new sidewalk just to, to provide access around that new addition, a new playground to replace the one that we're taking out. Um, and the retaining wall mentioned is just to get, uh, get the grading, navigate the grading along this slope because we have to clear out some trees, and we're trying to minimize that as much as possible. So, um, in order to avoid grading into the slope and taking out more trees, we are proposing a, like a four-foot-high modular block retaining wall, like a landscaping wall. Um, that's the basic scope of the project. Um, as far as utilities are concerned, we're planning on connecting water and sewer to the mains in Brook Lawn Road, um, and we are going to address stormwater management with some kind of stormwater management system, although we're, uh, there's some, uh, I guess, quandary over where exactly the storm sewer is. Um, I know, uh, Mr. Holloway pointed out to me, he, he, uh, excuse me for one second. I will switch back here. What we think is a pipe that goes through the site, um, apparently goes cockeyed through the site. So we tried to locate that with an underground utility markout and a video, and it couldn't get past about 30 feet this way and about 30 feet that way. So we're still trying to figure out exactly what we're going to do with that storm sewer pipe, but that will definitely be handled as part of the final construction plans. Um, so like I said, it's pretty straightforward. Um, I'm certainly willing to take any questions on the site plan.
I had a question. Have you seen the engineering report?
I have, yes.
And do you have any questions regarding that?
Um, I do not, but I have it in front of me. I can address your comments if you'd like.
Uh, just real, and if you don't have any, um, specific questions, we, we don't have any specific, I don't, I don't know if anybody here has.
No, I'm, the only one that I would address is, um, number one, I do not think we're actually exceeding that .25 acres of additional impervious coverage because most of this is going on top of an existing paved playground. Um, so our stormwater management system is going to be designed to address, um, the soil erosion sediment control, uh, practices in, in New Jersey.
Is it only the soil erosion involvement?
Correct.
So, okay, that.
Yeah, it doesn't meet the definition of a major development.
I wasn't sure based on the plan.
Mm-hmm. Um, other than that, um, the, well, I, number two was regarding the address, which I have clarified. Um, number three is citing compliance with conditional use, um, which we can go over if anybody has any questions about that. Um, and number four is, um, testimony regarding truck movement, soil movement, and anticipated start and duration of the construction, um, which, if you have any questions, I'm going to, I'm going to pass those off to Steve Colella because I believe he's, he's discussed the staging and, uh, construction means and methods with the applicant, the owner.
Do you coordinate that with the Township Engineering Department as far as soil movement?
Is that, we can. We have, no, we have not. Not yet. We will be submitting to the Soil Conservation District once I figure out the stormwater management system.
Thank you.
Certainly.
I'm assuming that, that we'll be planning testimony which could go to point number two.
Yeah.
Good. All right. Now, I see, I see a couple of questions down here. Mr. Matt?
Yeah, hi. A couple of questions with the retaining wall. I guess, I was looking at the grading, I guess it's, the wall, i, the sidewalks on the bottom end of the wall?
Correct.
On the top?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and at four feet, I don't believe it needs to go to the, the, the building department for structural review, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay. Um, what about a fence on it for, uh, like to protect? I think that drop, doesn't it require like some kind of retaining wall or something
I just pointed out because as part of the ordinance, it does include fencing around playgrounds.
Should that be part of planning testimony or discussion?
Yeah. I can certainly take that under advisement. I mean, it's something that I can bring to the school board and see if they want to follow that advice. I mean, as far as I am aware, the conditional use has already been approved, so we're grandfathered in, so...
This is review and recommendation, so it would be a recommendation.
Right, okay. Yeah, I'll certainly bring it up with the school district. I don't know if they... I know they don't have fence around the playgrounds now. It doesn't look like there's actually any fence along this property line because it's pretty well buffered with a tree line. So we'll certainly take that under advisement.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. DiDi.
A couple of questions. You mentioned some trees will have to be removed.
Yes.
Any idea? Just curious, how many trees do you are looking at?
I'm sorry, I don't know. We didn't do a specific tree survey. We just did a tree line survey, so I'm not sure exactly how many trees will be removed.
Okay. The second question, the sidewalk you just mentioned there, I'm assuming that this will have ramp or something for accessibility purposes?
Yes.
Ramp to get on?
Everything is going to be very...
Accessible.
Yes.
Okay.
Any other members of the board or our professionals have any questions on this testimony at this time? Mr. Apolatano?
I'm pretty sure there's a gaga ball pit over there somewhere. Is that going to stay there or is that going to get moved? I know some of the Littleton dads put that up, so.
That's a good question that I don't know the answer to.
I'd want to say it's a little... It might be in that little area there.
Hold on. I've got... I'm not entirely sure what a gaga pit looks like, so...
I know what a gaga pit looks like, and I don't know that...
Okay.
I'm going to have to check. I know we had one at Mount Tabor for a bit.
We put one in, yeah.
I'll have to go back next time I'm at Littleton.
Apparently Steve Colella can answer that question.
That can be moved easily, so it's fine. I know the kids like it.
We'll get around to it.
I'd like to call up our planner, Stephen Colella, at this time.
Excellent. Just... I'm just going to ask a general. Are there any members of the public who are here to ask questions of any of these things, any of these witnesses or anything? Or is this all... Is everybody here part of your entourage?
Yeah.
All right.
That's right.
One more question. We have a good question.
The new addition will be sprinkled and...
Yes, as I understand it, yes.
And will there be a bathroom located in the addition?
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Hope so, because I'm providing sanitary solutions.
Very good. All right. So again, since we do not have members of the public here to ask questions of these witnesses at this time, you can move forward.
Great. So I'd like to call up our planner at this time.
Stephen Colella. I'm an associate at Pret-Somnian Architects. I've been there for the last eighteen years. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. I've been working with Dr. Sargent in Parsony for a majority of those eighteen years that I've been at Pret-Somnian, specifically with Dr. Sargent for the last six, like she said.
Could you please spell your last name?
C-O-L-E-L-L-A.
Thank you.
We have to swear you in.
Please raise your hand. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony that you're about to provide will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And your license in New Jersey is current and in good standing?
Yes.
Okay, great.
Any questions on his...
Well, are you the... You're an architect. Are you the planner?
Can he be accepted as an expert? Just wanted to clarify.
Are you a licensed planner in the city of New Jersey?
I am not, no. I'm an architect.
So this is the school's architect? Correct.
Right. Okay, so you're giving architectural testimony, not planning testimony?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I heard planner. I...
I think that was stated, but I believe architect is what was mentioned.
Okay, sorry.
All right. So we have an architect giving us architectural testimony.
Are there any questions for him from the board?
Are these actual... You actually building these? Are these the modular ones that kind of drop in place?
No, this is a masonry construction, so we're building...
Okay. And you said they're preschool classrooms? How many students can fit in the preschool classrooms?
Due to code limitations and rooms being sized in accordance with FES standards, which is the DOE's way of regulating, we're anticipating fifteen kids per classroom.
Okay. And then are there bathroom facilities in every single room?
Correct. And then there's a staff restroom as well.
In each room?
No, 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 I'm sorry. Student restrooms...
In every room?
Pre-K sized in every room, and then a staff restroom outside in the corridor for staff access.
Okay. Thank you.
Fair enough. Other questions, Mr. Mailey?
Could you flip back to the first sheet, please?
That is the first sheet.
That's the pre-existing or currently existing.
My bad. Sorry. Regarding the addition, the proposed addition, will there be any fire exits or entrances in that specific addition?
The main entrance, I believe, would be... So we have a main entrance proposed on this side of the building here, and on each side, the corridor between the two is fire rated for one out.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other members of the board or...
The entrances that are there, will they be coded for key code only to get in? Is that how it works?
We're working that out with the district, but right now, yes, it will be staff. It'll be egress only out.
Right.
And to come in, security, whatever the district, you know, invites us to do.
Mr. Mayor, you have any questions?
I have none.
Other members of the public or of our staff here?
Just one for fire equipment. Two ends of that building are going to be as wooded, so fire runs couldn't go around there. I would... A fire department fires fights...
We reached out to the fire subcode official, you know, as a courtesy during the review process, and we were advised that the spacing we have around the building will allow them to get equipment back there and access all sides of the...
The walkway is wide enough for the vehicles?
Yeah, and that's why, you know, we worked with the civil engineer back to retaining what would fall in that particular addition.
All right, the walkway's wide enough. I didn't... Couldn't tell from that drawing.
It's... Again, we did reach out to the fire subcode officials to make sure that we have that ability.
And they can make that turn?
I'm sure, you know, again, we did show them the plan, and, you know, they had their chance to look at it, so I'm hoping that that was, you know, clear enough on them that they can interpret that properly. Again, we are willing and open to address that with them if there are any perceived issues with that.
Okay. Thank you.
This one we need Bob Keller the most, in any case. Any other members of the board or our professionals have any questions? Counselor?
At this time, we have no further testimony. If there's any other questions, please let us know.
I have another question. Dr. Sargent, so if preschool enrollment was to... Let's just say it falls over the next few years, could kindergarten's rooms be put in there and then those kindergartens become other grades? Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. We did have that one planning question, which I'm not sure how we go about the process of having it properly answered without a formal planner, but...
The initial use question?
Yes.
So the architect can answer the criteria that we satisfy and the efforts to satisfy the ordinance without giving specific planning?
Okay. Assuming you feel comfortable with that?
It's fine with me. Want to take turns?
Yes, sorry. I could address the compliance with the accused criteria. The conditional use criteria has five, or the first five criteria are the premises located on, excuse me, on an access to street classified as other than a local street. We do not comply with that. Brooklong Drive is actually considered a local road for the master plan, but we can't very well pick up the school and move it, so...
Is that really? Because that's a fairly significant street.
I was kind of surprised by that, too, but I looked it up.
Yeah.
Unless it's changed since I looked it up.
If she's correct.
Number two was the minimum of three acres of land, which we certainly do comply. We're at sixteen point eight six acres. Number three is regarding the parking count, which we do comply with. We have a hundred and six stalls to a quarter and fifty-eight student projected enrollment. The location of the parking does not comply because the conditional use ordinance has charging to not be within the front yard. But again, I'm not going to pick it up and move it.
Pre-existing?
Pre-existing, thank you. Number four was outdoor play areas located in the side or rear yard with requirements for minimum square footage. We do comply with that. We have approximately three thousand, three hundred and sixty square feet of playground space, which will accommodate a hundred and twelve students at one time, so the school district can work around that. Number five, I think number five was about... Oh, pick up and delivery is still running. And we did submit, I think, a traffic impact statement with our application, so that demonstrated compliance with number, the fifth condition of the conditional use. Then all other conditions will be compliant with. So number six, number seven, number eight, and actually number nine is pretty open-minded. It just has a planning board of the township of Parsony Troy Hills. They impose such additional conditions in state where it has the use appropriate. I'm going to say we comply.
You haven't heard our requirements yet.
So as far as I am aware, we... There are two conditions which we don't comply with. It's both pre-existing conditions.
Okay.
The only one was the outdoor playground with the fencing. You said you would take that under recommendation?
Certainly, yes.
And you do provide a buffer there for string for the residential areas, and that was also part of the outdoor play area. Is there a planner testifying or...
There is.
There is no planner. So the other thing at issue would be compliance with the master plan.
Yes.
Do you have testimony toward that or would you...
I don't. I'm not familiar enough with the master plan. I prefer to do...
So I did review the master plan in regards to this, and Dr. Sargent could probably opine on the point that over the past ten years, the number of elementary and middle school students has increased by roughly sixty students at the time that they did the master plan. And the Board of Education is projecting further growth. Would that be correct?
That is correct.
Throughout the grade levels, or is it seen more at one area or another?
We had a demographers report done about three years ago, and the demographers report projected that our initial growth would come at the elementary and middle level and eventually age into our high school.
Okay. So the master plan does specifically call out a couple of schools as having capacity issues coming up, and Littleton School is one of those, as well as Mount Bor, Knollwood, Troy Hills, and North Vale. The expected growth, it's likely that they would need expanded facilities. That's identified in our master plan, so the addition for these incoming pre-k and kindergarten students would be consistent with the master plan.
Thank you.
No problem.
Kind of unrelated, I guess. St. Christopher's Church, elementary school for many years, which is empty now and not utilized at all. Has the school board considered leasing that empty school and gain classrooms that way? You could probably upgrade to the current codes for a couple hundred thousand dollars, which is probably going to be cheaper than that building.
Thank you for the question, Mr. DiPiero. We actually had the honor of touring under Father Joseph at St. Christopher's and brought our architect with us on one of those trips. When we look at bringing that particular school up to code and renovating classrooms and bathrooms to be able to meet New Jersey requirements, it was several million dollars to renovate for a piece of property that we wouldn't own, and so Littleton became a wiser choice.
Wow. That's a shocker. It's a shame to see an empty school building there and can't use it. Yeah, works out sometimes like that. Any other questions or comments, Mr. DiDi?
Mr. Chairman, yeah, good question. I'm not clear based on the drawing, right? The unauthorized access to the new structure, so I don't know if somebody can talk about it, how we are making sure it's secure and safe. I'm just going based on what we're hearing in the news at so many schools, what's happening. So how are we addressing that part? Yeah.
To answer your question, the doors from the exterior, when rooms locked at all times from access from the doorway that way, there is the main entry point to the school, if I'm looking at this correctly, is on this side of the street, what is main security or main office here. So the visitation and visitors are all, you know, pushed to this entry point here, but the rest of this new addition will be locked from the exterior at all times, egress out available to everyone from this side.
Okay. And how about the fence or anything on this side at the property line side? Can anybody just walk in from this side?
Right now, I don't... Is there any... There's no fence at the property. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, I have a quick question. Mr. DiDi, are the doors alarmed? So if somebody cracks open a door, puts a book in there, because they have to run in and run out, like on that side of the building, if the main entrance is all the way over there, is that door alarmed? So would somebody at the main entrance know that that door in the back in that new addition is open? I know from experience, typically my kids up from school, anytime you open the door, it's a very loud, annoying sound. So it's quite loud. So it's a jar, but something, a cone or whatever, it beeps pretty loud. Everybody knows. Assuming the same thing will happen with the new doors.
We're going to, you know, we're going to meet all the districts in their security protocols and measures.
But is there a notification system to the front office that that... Because you may hear it close, but if you're all the way at the main office and that door's open, is there an alarm system in the main office to know that the door's open?
Has access to all, you know, available...
Doors and everything?
Yes.
So there's going to be a substantial amount of security at the location with significant notification. I'm actually looking at the superintendent, that she agrees that everything here will be compliant with New Jersey law and with our best...
Yes, sir.
Practices.
Yeah, but I'm a little concerned about there is no barrier on this side of the new structure, so somebody could just walk in without going through the main entrance. So I don't know. As a recommendation would be to secure this side as well.
So I don't believe there's a site on the other side, or there's fence on the other side of the school.
Those are all soccer fields and the like. They're generally used.
Mr. DiDi, if I may, one of the benefits of having neighborhood schools is that the neighborhood often uses the property for walking, and they've been very understanding and courteous that they are certainly able to walk on school grounds away from the building. So we don't have fences on most of our schools prohibiting neighbors and community members from strolling or walking their dogs through there. I will say that the doors are locked. The only entrance is through the main office area, and we utilize a visitor management system by which any visitor who's not a district staff member needs to insert their passport or license before gaining entry to the school, and the school secretary or school principal runs that through a database to approve their entrance into the school. If anyone shows up without an appointment, they are denied entry.
Okay. I mean, ten years ago, I mean, perfectly fine. Things have changed, right, in recent past? So I think, may not be now, but I think we should consider some additional...
I understand.
...effort going forward. Thank you so much.
Other members of the board?
Mr. Chairman, did we discuss or hear testimony on the timing of this? How long this is going to take? And is this taking place during the school year or summers only or after-school hours? Did we talk about that? We didn't. Okay. Can we hear a little bit about that, please?
Give us some comments on the timing.
Well, excuse me, before you speak, the microphone, you muted it. You just give it another press.
Hello. Yeah, so we're anticipating being up to bid. This is a publicly bitted job. We anticipate construction starting later in the summer, and yes, it will carry into the school year. We are right now scheduled for completion and have students in the addition by September 2024.
So during the school hours, there'll be construction workers on school property during recess time and...
That is correct.
Trucks moving around the parking lot and everything during school hours.
Public bidding laws require all background checks on anyone that's on-site. Anyone that comes into the site will have to gain access through the main office and get access to the site prior to being on-site. So, you know, we're going to have as many security measures and different things in place to ensure that. The site, when it's in construction, will be fenced off and separated from the rest of the grounds with privacy fencing and other things.
All right, just no trucks during pickup and drop-off hours, hopefully.
That will be...
Because that broke on the...
I'm sure it's chaos, yes.
[laughing]
Yeah, part of the spec, too, is the contractor will have to issue a logistics plan to show when those vehicles... And obviously, our spec dictates when they can receive deliveries and all that stuff.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that question, playground's going to be accessible during construction?
All except the one that is currently in the scope of work, but the rest of it will be available, correct?
Would the new playground be constructed early on in this process or...
Due to its location and the foundation work that we have to do, I would say that would probably be done after construction, just because we're going to have that whole site opened up, so...
Okay.
And it's, I believe it's, you can see it's in here in the courtyard now, so that area is probably going to be under some construction during that time, so...
Interesting.
Any other questions?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. As you can see, they have to add on to the schools, and this is just the beginning in Parsony. From 2018 to 2021, there was three thousand, three hundred and thirty-two units approved here in Parsony with regards to the requirements of affordable housing. So, you know, that's going to impact the school significantly, and we haven't even hit round four yet. Once we hit round four, which is coming in 2025, you're going to see a lot more of these type of additions being put on the schools, which is going to be a burden on the taxpayers, and that's no fault of the schools. That's just the requirements that we have to meet, which I think is really totally ridiculous because it should be legislated, not legislated by the courts. And that's really what's happened here in Parsony, not just Parsony, throughout the entire state. So I'm sure we'll be seeing a lot of these courtesy reviews from other schools and stuff like that. I commend you, Dr. Sargent. You've got a difficult task ahead of you with regards to the requirements that the state is imposing on the townships, which to me is really ridiculous, and it's just out of control. And towns are going to be taking the brunt of it, and we're going to be taking the brunt of it if you use the Rutgers study. And the Rutgers studies, I mean, you significantly will have about twelve hundred new school-aged children coming to Parsony. That's just in this round. I don't know what's going to happen in the next round, although the requirements are going to be even more, not restrictive, but more, you know, out there because there's a lot of properties that are lying dormant in Parsony due to the fact of the pandemic, which created what? Vacant office spaces. So we'll be repurposing a lot of properties here in Parsony, and they're going to use as a crutch the affordable housing rules as their remedy. And I mean, the developers will be doing that, and we're going to have no choice. And no fault to the planning board or any of the boards, they had no choice but to follow the requirements of the state and the affordable housing rules, which to me are just barbaric, not barbaric, but are just out of control for towns like Parsony and towns within their surrounding towns in Morris County. So, you know, whatever I can do in the future, Dr. Sargent, to work with you on these things when we have more housing coming, because it's going to come eventually, I'd like to work with you on that.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, quick comment here. So again, just going recent history, we don't see a lot of new construction in schools specifically, so I'm very happy to see something like this, new construction coming up for children, for schools. I feel like our community gets richer really when we do something like that. So I really recommend, you know, I really commend the entire team, especially Dr. Sargent, to come up with a new project like that.
Thank you.
And I wholeheartedly support this project.
All right. Do you have anything else, Counselor?